Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Work Session on February the 6th. We have a first today. If you look on the big screen, you will see our councilman, Mr. Boda, in Peru. So, we are trying to Skype him. Have you been Skyped, Mr. Boda?
I have been Skyped.
All right. I would also remind everybody that wants to speak to Mr. Boda or make a comment, you have to speak into the microphone for him to hear you. Okay? Great. Without further ado, the first item on the agenda is Special Olympics Truck Pull Presentation, Detective Jason Caputo. Come on up. Jason can't, he couldn't be here. I figured. Jason Caputo.
My name's Tom Citi.
Tom? Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Afternoon. Afternoon, everyone. All right. 2017 Special Olympics event is starting. Salisbury Police Department has paired up with the Salisbury Fire Department to perform what's going to be identified as hopefully our first annual Heroes Challenge Fire Truck Pull. Premise behind this is we are going to be seeking the assistance of members from surrounding areas to form 10-man teams. They are going to be pulling a rope that's going to be attached to one of the fire trucks. The truck is going to be...
Could you get closer?
Okay.
Thank you.
The fire truck is going to be stationed right here on North Division Street between the sidewalk of 13 here and our 50, and then also to Main Street here. The challenge is going to be for the 10 people to pull the truck as far as they can within a certain time limit or past a finish line. Each member is going to be required to provide a donation of $25 to participate on a team for a total team value of $250. We're also seeking the assistance of the community to also provide donations to help pay for some of these teams to participate, and we are looking to generate approximately 20 teams for this event. We have experienced programs in the city before with our Special Olympics. Last year, we did a Cops on Rooftops event, which was received exceptionally well through the community, and we raised about $7,000 for the program. We wish to continue on with this program and perform this fire truck pull and raise more money for the Special Olympics.
Fantastic. Questions?
I have one question.
Go right ahead.
Is Bull's team full?
Bull's team?
Bull is on our celebrity team, and the team has not been fully comprised yet. There are members, I believe the mayor has thrown his name into the hat. Chief Duncan has also agreed to participate. We are still seeking other members to participate.
So, let me understand that Bull's team's going to be pulling the ladder truck, and the rest of everybody is pulling the engine.
Something like that.
I would participate, but then you'd have to have EMS standing by. But I will donate.
The five of us could pull an ambulance. I don't see any reason why we couldn't. Look how hard it is to just...
Mr. Boda, would you like to pull an engine?
Hey, I think my tug-of-war days are over.
Well, it's a very worthwhile project. I fully support it, and I'm sure the council does. And though I will not be pulling, I will make a donation for sure, so...
I was going to say, maybe we'll make a donation.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Tom. All right. Next up on the agenda is revising the employee healthcare benefits upon retirement, Mr. Cordery and Mrs. Lloyd. How are you?
I'm great, even though my partner's not here. We've had discussions, we've had discussions regarding the other benefits, post-employment benefit liabilities called OPEB, and GASP, the Government Accounting Standards that we're required to use in order to come to some level of money that we're supposed to have in a trust fund over the next several years out into infinity as long as the city's around. And we looked at the process of the formula that was used in order to do OPEB, and we realized that there were some, the numbers weren't all good. First off, the percentage of how many retirees actually participated, so we replugged in that number. It went from 90% down to, I think, 60%. We also looked at how we state what our benefit actually is. Currently, we state it as 50% of what the annual contract cost is for that particular plan. And in doing so, the actuaries are allowed to actually add the, what they believe is the number of 2% annually, and it compounds, so forth and so on, until 15 years from now. We were looking at an unfunded liability of about $66 million. So, we came up with a flat rate number for our retirees to pay, which is very close to, actually a little better than right now, the 50% mark. So, we haven't gotten our premiums in for this next FY18. So, we kind of built it up just a tiny bit in case, but the way we've developed it is if you're a single individual when you leave and you're under age 65, we'll put towards your health insurance a maximum of $3,500. If you're an employee and you have a spouse and you're under 65, we will put forward up to $7,000 towards your health insurance program. And if you have a family, we will put up to $9,500 towards your health insurance. The next caveat that also changed, or we would like to change, is currently our employees have to work 10 years in order to receive a retirement healthcare benefit. Regardless, they still also have to be able to retire out in the state program, either the regular or the leots. What we're proposing is, and this helps change the numbers really a great deal, is anyone who's hired after 9/1/2017, that they have to have 20 years versus the 10 years. And we've presented this information in charts to you in the past, and we came upon an option that we felt we were comfortable with, and these are the options that have been presented at that time. So now, we're prepared to make that change to our employee handbook, and we've also put it in the budget as what the cost is going to be for this year coming up. I think we've already built in a 2% possible increase, and we need two more months of data to actually clear that hurdle. It's a good possibility we may not see an increase at all. So, we've rewritten the section for the employee handbook, and we've also presented a resolution that would enable us to move forward with these changes. We've already scheduled meetings for the middle of this month to talk with all the employees who are within the five-year window of being able to retire, so that we can explain to them how we've come to these numbers and what that change is going to mean to them.
A question, just before we open the floor to questions, could you just address for everyone what the current retirees which are, have retired already, could you explain what that...
They're going to remain at the 50% mark.
Can I add a couple of things? Sure. If I remember correctly, the last time we met, there was a concern expressed about the inclusion of spouses. And so, there were three options presented. So, based on that, a fourth option was formulated that includes the spouses. So, that's what's being put forward, because that was expressed as a serious concern about the proposal going forward. The second part that we're proposing, let me talk a little bit about process. The immediate process is Ms. Lloyd, Mr. Cordery, Ms. Glanz, and myself met with each of the personnel committees. Just as one entry point to get information out there about what was being discussed, I'll tell you, at the start of every single personnel committee meeting, there were grim looks on the other side of the table, and at the end of every one of those personnel committee meetings, there was a lot of understanding, and everybody said, you know, "Well, we thought this was something else. We thought this was, we were going to lose this benefit," or it was going to be cut. Now, here's the way that we ensure that there is not a cut in a benefit, and it's a policy and procedural change. The figure that is being put forth today is for this fiscal year only. So, $3,500, $7,000, and $9,500, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Those are only for this fiscal year. So, it will be entered into the budget ordinance as a line, as a chart, and then every single year, the mayor, the council, the personnel committees, anybody who wants to, the general public, will see those numbers, and so, we'll all have an opportunity to look at that and say, "Wait a minute. We're falling behind 50%." Or, "Wait a minute, you know, this is getting dangerously low." And then, to have an honest advocacy effort to say, "Hey, this should be higher." You know, I want it to remain at the same, you know, reflective of 50% of what the value is. I think, from what I heard, all of you on the council want it to. I think the employees certainly want it to. So, what we're doing by making it a part of the budget explicitly is that we'll all have an opportunity to engage in those discussions every single year at budget time, instead of it being sort of a behind-the-scenes formulaic process of, "Oh, it's just $3,500 flat." And so, to get that information out, you know, the plan that Jeanie was just speaking to is to take it to every retiree, excuse me, every employee who is eligible within five years to retire, and to give them an opportunity to have a meeting with and answer questions, have questions answered by Jeanie and Keith. In addition to that, anyone else who wants to attend can attend, so all employees can attend. But specifically, we're targeting those who are soon to retire.
Good. Questions?
I'll just thank council if I can for all the input, because it, you know, it changed the direction we were going, but I think for the better. So, appreciate it.
Do you know, or I wish Mr. Cordery was here, when they go now to calculate the unfunding, are they, they're going to use an inflation, I assume they're going to use inflation figure for the, for the fixed amount?
No, sir.
Or how they're going to do that? Just the flat?
It's fixed. It's flat.
Okay.
That's how we get the greater lesser number. We were going to be at $66 million...
Right.
...in 15 years.
Right.
Now, we're going to be at 32.
But not really.
But not really.
But not really.
I think more important than, and I...
You said it out loud.
Right.
I was just waiting for it, but I think the important thing is we've kept the integrity of the system and yet firmed up the unknown, which was always an issue. 50% number, who knows where that would be?
Right.
You know, and now, now we have a number that we can adjust if we see fit, but we also know what that number is, as opposed to a percentage of a unknown number. So, and we haven't hurt any of the existing retirees and/or their families. So, I think, I think it's a fair compromise.
Well, Mr. President, if I could, I'd just say, I think by approaching it the way that we're approaching it now after the input from the last meeting, I don't think we're hurting existing retirees or existing employees...
No.
...as long as we're all committed to that.
Right.
But that's incumbent upon, you know, all of us to stay committed to and stay vigilant.
I see Mr. Boda nodding his head. Do you have any comments or questions, Mayor?
No. I'm grateful that the mayor and everybody was able to work out, work this out, and I support what we're doing, and thank you for responding to not only our questions, but those of the personnel committees.
Anything else?
You're welcome.
Do we have consensus? Consensus, Mr. Mayor? Okay? He gave a thumbs up. We're okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Mr. Lennox, we have you for a pre-annexation agreement.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And Pastor Reiner?
Yep. Yes, I remember him. Hi, Pastor, how are you?
Very well.
Welcome this afternoon.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Heath. Just a bit of clarification, the, it's not actually a discussion of the pre-annexation because it has been annexed.
It's the changes.
So, it's the discussion before you, and this is a first, by the way, and it's, and Pastor Reiner is just kind of used to being a first with the, with the city now. As you can see from the paperwork, it was 2006 when the property of Faith Baptist Church on Daggsboro Road was brought into the city at the initiation, obviously, of the church. And the timing being what it was, as you know, the economy and a lot of things related to the economy was very different at that time, and the city had just embarked on a brand-new process for annexations, and Faith Baptist got to be the pilot project. This is the first annexation that we had where there was something called a concept development plan and a detailed annexation plan that included, because again, the economy was in a different place, various exactions, that's the legal word for it, from prospective developers. And so, when this particular proposal was in front of you and through the negotiations led by Mr. Jakubiewak, who is still working on your behalf, I believe, this very detailed concept plan was included in the annexation agreement, and really, this whole process, process with the church became a model for those that followed. The economy, I don't have to tell you what happened there, and then many of the annexation agreements never got built out, as this did not get built out. So, I know that if the pastor had his way, this would have proceeded. It included an expansion to the school, an expansion of the sanctuary, which meant access to city water and sewer. They didn't go at this to become developers, but the developers were driving their larger purpose. With the passage now of over 10 years, they have brought before you, very recently, and this council and mayor supported the idea of solar development in the city, by special exception through the Board of Zoning Appeals. Included, embedded in those staff reports and that of the Planning and Zoning Commission to you was that reminder that this property, in addition to being governed, of course, by zoning, is governed by an annexation agreement and the reference to a concept plan. The discussion this evening is not solar. That has been on a conceptual basis before you and will, in a more detailed basis, come before the Board of Zoning Appeals if the property owner and their, I'm not sure if it's a vendor, their company that they are working with, if they proceed. It's especially important, though, for the integrity of the city's annexation process that we stick to the annexation plan and that this council and mayor at least nod to the development, and then also address the conditions along the way. I don't need to bring in any other examples for you, but suffice to say, though, there are others following them that negotiated road improvements, payments into affordable housing, payments into neighborhood reinvestment, perhaps laying out some open space. And we want to make sure that in the future, just as your former council and mayor want to make sure, when you agree to an annexation and you were sold a particular thing, you want to make sure that that, that that's what you got. So, in this instance, for a lot of good reasons that Pastor can get into if you, if you like, they're proposing at this point to go to a more passive use of the property and would like you to, in formal session, I believe by resolution, but I can confirm that with Mr. Tillman, actually modify the annexation plan to essentially include solar as a permitted use, and also to clarify that those other exactions, including road improvement and per-unit payments to the city, remain a condition should they at any point in the future decide to proceed with the residential. So, essentially, that's it. It's to amend the annexation agreement, include the use, but make it clear that those conditions do not apply to this development. The key one being the extension of East North Point Drive. If that is a requirement, I trust the church in saying that that would make the project totally unaffordable, and frankly, the road's not necessary for that use. Did I cover that pretty well?
Questions?
What? I heard, I listened, I mean, he said, "Now, I don't understand what I'm doing."
Sure. If the, if the council agrees, we would schedule for a regular session, a resolution, that would modify the annexation agreement that you have in your packet...
Okay.
...to include as an allowable use on this property, solar...
Correct.
...and would clarify the other exactions, that those would only come into play should the church proceed at any point with residential development.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe I just needed you to say it slower.
It's taken...
Plus, you can't hear it this year, so, and he's in, in South America, so it was better to do it twice.
He's shaking his head, so I think he, I think Mayor's got it.
So, let's, in layman's terms, if they decide to go back and do the residential, all the other stuff that was covered in the first annexation agreement, they'd have to do. They don't have to do those things because they're going to use it as solar now.
If I can modify that slightly, not, it's, it's...
You got it.
But there's more than that. But it's, but there's another step. Not only if they decide not to do this and decide to build residential, but when this project, you know, when its useful life is over, and if they decide to do residential then, they still have to meet the expectation.
Did you catch that, Mayor? I saw you sort of like squinting.
And the company that installs will...
Oh, wait, now I see her.
Oh, my God. And the company that is installed will remove...
It's coming up through South America, Central America.
Was that, was that the mayor speaking? I didn't...
Yes. That was the mayor speaking.
Hello. Good phrase.
Hello from America. Do I need to repeat what I said?
I can. Do you want him to repeat what he said?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Was that the mayor?
Yes.
If he could.
Sure. All I was saying is adding to, to what Councilman Irtzen said, is that not only if they decide not to do the solar development and do residential instead, but if the, if the solar development lives its useful life, and then they decide to do residential development then, at any point, if they do residential development, at that point, the exactions such as the roads and things like that have to be built.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm okay with that.
Cool. Any other questions?
And with the idea of them removing those panels, the installer, the company that installs them, they will remove the solar panels after the...
Life Revival Project, I think that's what we said the last time.
Yes, that's all part of their contract with us.
Okay.
And we would reference that contract and those provisions as part of the special exception review.
Got you. Do we have consensus then?
I just want to say congratulations. There's been so many people over the last 10 years that have come to the city with plans for solar, and it's the church that gets it done first.
That's it.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
We have consensus. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is redesignation of the Arts and Entertainment District. Ms. Kordakowski, welcome.
I'm bringing Jamie too.
And Jamie, too.
The last time Laura Kordakowski and the police chief were in the same room, so much money rolled into both of their accounts, we should be thoughtful and cautious right now.
I don't think...
I think you got $975.
I didn't get nearly as much as Chief did, so if we need her up here, if you've got any money that you want to...
You're setting us up, is what you're doing.
I just, I can't believe I remembered it.
How do those bus tires feel?
Chief smiling, so we're...
Really sweet. Well, we are here for something a little less exciting this time. Hey. Just kidding. We are, we are due to file our arts entertainment designation. The existing district covers 85.16 acres of land. We're not proposing any expansions this time. It's just a simple redesignation. The application for it is due April 1st. Otherwise, our designation would expire June 30th, and we certainly don't want to see all the great things that our Arts and Entertainment District has done for our city go away. So, if you have any questions, or if Jamie, if you'd like to speak to what you've been doing.
Sure. The council saw an expansion application from us not that long ago, just two short years ago, where we sought to expand the, our district's boundaries. We expanded to include River's Edge Apartments and Studio for the Arts, as well as some northern properties, to include some churches, boundless playgrounds, some other outdoor and indoor spaces. And the reason why we're back again so soon is because there's always a 10-year window. Every 10 years, no matter what, we have to file a redesignation with the state of Maryland. If we filed an expansion application simultaneously with our redesignation, it doesn't smooth the process. There really wasn't a reason for us to wait at the time, and we were timing it with the completion of River's Edge, the River's Edge project by the Marina. So, we apologize for being here again so soon. Hopefully, next time, maybe you won't see us for 10 years. Who knows? We'll see how it goes. But we're asking just for a continuation of the existing agreements.
Questions? Mayor? He's, Mayor's thumbs up. Peru, okay. Okay. Any consensus?
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's, it's become a mainstay of our, of our city, and it's fantastic what you do, and hopefully, we can get this approved quickly...
Thank you.
...and move forward.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd just add, the way that the legislation was written when these were created by the state is they go through not only the municipality, but the county as well. So, there will be a county council scheduled hearing at some point. I would just encourage council members, if they can, to attend that meeting and speak on behalf of the economic impact of the Arts and Entertainment District.
I think we're hoping to be on 6:00 PM on the 21st, although that's not confirmed at this point.
I would suggest that when you go before them, you have some numbers.
Sure.
I would do it blindfolded and held with a gun to my head behind this wall for you.
I understand.
That might not be the case, and you may need to have specifics and examples of ways that the designation has helped, that the continuation of the designation has helped. If there are any examples of people taking example, taking...
Advantage.
Advantage. It's like cough medicine. Advantage of the tax credit, if we could get those two for them as well, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, good recommendation.
We will do.
Yeah, be ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, it's time, Mr. Paul.
Next.
That's nice.
Mr. Theo Williams is now joining us. I like the beard.
Thank you. I'm gonna, people have been saying that. I'm actually not a big fan of it, but the girlfriend likes it, so I don't, I don't have much choice.
The queen's happy.
Exactly. Exactly.
Everybody's happy.
That's what I keep by.
Okay.
So, can we first acknowledge that everyone is a half an hour ahead of schedule and how awesome that is? I would just like to say that.
I thought we were behind.
I'll try not to slow us down. I've got five items. They're hopefully fairly straightforward. The first one is a budget amendment that is, or budget ordinance, sorry, that is really very minute, and it's an amount that we're transferring. We're removing 600 from a community promotions account for the youth council, increasing surplus by $275, and then transferring that to the grant fund. That's a result of trying to ensure that the scholarship fund that we've set up is non-lapsing, so that it doesn't end with the fiscal year, because of course, we award it at the end of the youth council, which is then of the fiscal year, and then they don't use it until next year. When I tried to do this last year, Mr. Cordy pointed out that because it's between different funds, I'm going to need council authorization. We did not expand all of the budget last year, and so, we had... We did not expand all of the budget last year, and so we had plenty of money left over. Am I not on the mic correct?
That's Muir. It's a connection issue with Mr. Vaughn.
Oh, okay.
Oh, just for that? Muir, are you still with us?
Keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, he's still here. We got him. I can see him.
I can see him, too.
He's still awake, so he gave me a thumbs up, so we're okay.
That's good.
Go ahead.
So, are there any questions in regards to this?
Any issues, any questions on the transfer? Muir gave a thumbs up.
I'm fine.
Consensus? Great, okay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the cops hiring grant. I know Councilmember Irtin had some questions. I don't know how the council would like to proceed, if you want me to give an overview or jump straight to the questions, but...
Why don't you give a summary, and then you can answer.
So, I might ask Colonel to step up here, if you don't mind, just to make sure I've got all my facts correct. I believe the last time we had a cops grant, we were awarded in 2011, 2012. Sorry. I feel very protected right now.
Just make sure you're speaking to the mic.
Was it 2011, 2012, the last cops grant?
We started 2010.
2010.
It was awarded in 2009, but we were extended one year to...
And then it was 1996 was the one before that, I think, right?
I...
Roughly.
Roughly.
So, this is something that, you know, we apply for, I mean, you've applied for it nearly every year. Last year, we were denied funding, I don't know why. But this year, we applied, and I would say this is a testament to our police department that we were ranked 11th out of nearly 1,200 applications, which is, the mayor pointed out, is the top 1%. And that, it is a points-based application, which is rating you on your commitment to community policing and various principles associated with that. So, I mean, if there ever is a national ranking of police departments and their relation to community policing, I mean, that pretty much is the closest. So, we beat out LA, we beat out New York City, I mean, we, I mean, we pretty much beat out everyone, except for San Bernardino. They were the best in the country, which, a little ironic, but... So, the, Mr. Cordy corrected my match figure. I had miscalculated workman's comp, and instead of calculating it as .94%, it's actually 9.4% for non-clerical. So, that would increase the city's total match to $220,000. As I said in the memo, we don't need to do anything this fiscal year, because we can fully expand the federal funds for any expenditures that we have this fiscal year. And then Mr. Cordy and I discussed how to deal with the rest of it, and we'll just incorporate it into the annual budget for FY 18, 19, '20. And I guess, is there anything else I'm missing, Chief or Colonel, in terms of the summary?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Questions? Mr. Irtin, you had a few.
Yeah. First off, let me start this question by saying taxes are taxes. Whether they're my local taxes that pay for our budget here, or my federal taxes, which pay for the cops grant. I've heard my friends on the other political spectrum, taxes is taxes. So, I guess my question is, when the, and this is my question, it says their hiring will relieve two current officers in order to fully staff the Safe Streets program. That, that's true. That's what you're saying to us.
By relieve, I mean free up, not fire, just to be clear.
No, correct, absolutely not. But I guess my question is, is when we had salary savings, and we took out to the tune of, for the radios, my question to you is, I'm glad you got this, and I don't mind my federal dollars going for this, but if you can't find two officers to hire with your regular money, how are you working to find two officers to hire with your cops grant money? And if you can't hire them, what do you do? And how do you decide when you go to a job fair and you see two, that are these two going to be hired with your general fund money, or your cops money? I'm just, I'm concerned that there's a lot of money being moved around for cars, for gasoline, for this, for that, and that's just during my tenure, yet we do this. If we can't at least somewhat accurately tell the city council that this is what we're doing with the money that we got, how are we accurately telling the federal government what we're doing with their money? And if we are accurately telling the federal government what we're doing with their money, could it possible that we more accurately tell the city council what it is we're doing with the money? You know, you read the same online nonsense that I read about how there's not enough officers. You know, I don't buy it, but I'm not the media who has to report on it. So, in lieu of those questions, could we also know how many officers we are down? We do these things, and these are good things, and I'm glad the federal government's doing it, but I'm unsure of the trail of how we get to two officers paid with this money and put two people back into Safe Streets. And I know that there is good explanation, I'm sure there is, and you're going to give it to us right now, and I'm going to take notes, and that'll be the end of my questions. Just, it's just a question.
So, where would you like to start? What question would you like me to address first?
If they are hiring to relieve two current officers that are fully staff the Safe Streets program, my question is, if we have enough money and salary savings to move the money that we did for the radios, how come we need another $250,000 from the federal government?
Well, right now, we have 10 current openings, and then we have four frozen positions.
Okay.
So, when we applied for this grant, we were applying to unfreeze two of those frozen positions.
And that right there could have been in the memo, and you would not have gotten a word out of me in terms of questions. That's all I needed to know.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make sure to include the frozen positions.
Muir, Chief Duncan was on her way out. She was gone.
Well, I don't, I don't know that anybody else has any questions, but my folks are not asking.
There's another grant, there's also another, there's another relevant grant as well.
Yeah.
No, 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 yeah, we have another grant, so. Any further discussion of this one? Consensus, everybody okay?
Sure.
Great, okay.
Okay, so the next one is an annual Formulate grant. Colonel, you can't leave yet. Just getting comfortable. It's the JAG grant that we receive every year. Just like the other annual grants, we did incorporate the authorization to expend the funds in the budget, but this federal grant comes with additional regulation. We have to enter into an MOU with the county, telling the county they don't get any money, and that we get all the money. It's something you just have to do. We have to have governmental approval, and we have to have public comment. So, this resolution incorporates, incorporates, compasses, thank you, all of those things. We got a little over $28,000, I think it was 28,131. That's to purchase and install seven public safety surveillance cameras in the city park. One's going to be in Ben, near Ben's Red Swings. One will be the pump station, and then there's two other ones that I don't remember off the top of my head where they're located, or will be located. The maps are included in the council packet. It's part of a broader network of public surveillance cameras stretching from the downtown to the end of the city park. However, the state did not fund us for the four additional cameras in the downtown, so we will have to use this Formulate grant next year to receive the funding for the four in the downtown. And that's pretty much the summary.
Go ahead, you go first.
You want me to go?
You go first.
My question would be, and I know we talked about camera, every time something happens in the park, which is every once in a while, and I don't know whether or not I mean every four months, or every three months, or every six months, but before I could support this, if Muir wasn't in South America, I'd have a long conversation with him beforehand about this, and about the government's eyes being everywhere. But that'll be for he and I when he gets back. Look at him smiling. But before I could support this, I'd really like to know the numbers in the park before I could agree that we watch everybody all the time in the park. And I can remember Chief Duncan and I in the, in the command vehicle down at the park, it's something, we did a, some gentleman from some company did a...
Demonstration.
A demonstration down there.
The capabilities of the cameras.
And it was after an incident that we had, but I, to be perfectly honest with you, I'd like to see the statistics for...
Would it, would it be possible if we can pull up the crime map, if that would be helpful? I know we'll, we'll miss Mr. Boda.
I've got it up, I've got it up right now.
Okay.
So, the city park, each 010 zone, shows Part 1 crimes for the year of 2016 in the 9 to 10 range, and they're on a kind of color gradient scale, I'll just try to describe it from 1 to 2, up to 117 to 219, in each little section of blocks, each little neighborhood. So, it's in the lower, you know, 10%, bottom 10%.
Let me ask this question, do you think that the, if you pull back 30,000 feet in the discussions that we've had about the urban, the greenway, all the things, Muir, Councilman Boda, from the park committee, what we just heard from the bike, I don't want to say it might be a little bit better to get consensus from all of those groups as to whether or not they felt cameras were necessary. Sometimes when something happens, there's this, we need cameras, we need cameras, but if that number is 10 to 12, that's one a month, if my math is correct.
If I could say, if I could say one thing, and this is having worked in the security industry for many years, no matter how many cameras you add, you will never have enough. That's, that's, that's number one. Number two, I think if we focus on a couple of key components, Ben's Red Swings is one area that we probably would like to add some cameras. And if, and then on the other piece of it, if we're looking at some city assets, such as the pump station, or some things like that, I mean, those are vital, important assets. You know, I don't, I don't, so I wouldn't support adding a camera every, every area of the entire park. I just, I just think that's, that's way overkill and an invasion of privacy. But I think in some key areas, such as Ben's Red Swings, the zoo, some other key city assets, I think those are the areas that we would like, that I, you know, I would see having cameras for a variety of reasons. I mean, it's, you know, it's a known fact that where children congregate, predators congregate as well, and so there's going to be a large concentration of children at Ben's Red Swings, at the zoo. So, those I think are important pieces, but in every area of the park, I don't, I don't see it's feasible, because then you have to have somebody manning and trying to watch all that stuff, because that's just, you know, and that's another aspect of it, when you add all these, you've got to add personnel to watch it all.
I'm not sure if you made the case for the cameras or not.
Well, I...
I'm kind of, I'm kind of up in the air, too, because you're talking about putting cameras in a park, and we have issues in other areas that need cameras, other crime-ridden communities that need cameras, and I don't hear anybody saying anything about that, but we're talking about putting cameras in a park that I have not really heard of any crime or destruction or anything going on like anything. So, what's the purpose of putting the cameras there? Somebody tell me that.
If I can, before you weigh in, Chief, I'm kind of with April on this, and I've got a little bit of a different approach, and a different reason why, I've got a different approach to this topic. So, I don't like cameras anywhere. I'm just not a fan of the concept. I don't, you know, I'm not sure I understand the deterrent value and the, you know, we certainly don't have the personnel to watch these things, you know, and that's not, that's not going to happen on a, you know, a one person per monitor, per camera, you know, we can't, we can't afford that. It's not going to happen.
And the speed cameras didn't show us that anybody slows down, right?
No, they keep speeding.
Well, Mayor, my thing is, it's not, I'm not, I'm really not going to say that it's a bad thing.
Right.
I'm not going to say it's a bad thing, because there may be issues or crimes going on that, no, nobody can actually watch the camera, but you can go back to the camera and see where the crime has been committed and who's committed it.
I think you're on to it now.
Yeah. That's, that's the issue that I'm trying, but we have other areas in Salisbury that really is prevalent that they have them there.
So, the question is, though, here's the real question for me, is almost every square inch of the city is covered with cameras. Covered. But it's private camera networks. And the question is, for those, is partnership with the private security companies, and that's something that the police department is working on. So, then the question becomes, because I think the real value is, is looking back and being able to identify, you know, if, who did what, if something happened, right? So, the real question is then, what responsibility is governments to have coverage? And I would say, over public property where there are no private cameras covering, and where it's unlikely that you can get private cameras to cover areas. So, the real question would be, why would you not want the same level of ability to see what happened in the city park that you have on Route 13, or, you know, any other place? Or like Doverdale, you know, playground, where we have cameras, or, you know, I would say that, you know, the value for the city park, and for the zoo, and Ben's Red Swings is, is for more about crime, maybe there's some deterrent effect, and I don't know. I mean, I trust the experts sitting across the table on that, and so that's where I lean, is listen to what the experts are saying. And, but with respect to the city park, and other parks, it's, okay, if a crime were to happen, we'd want to see what happened. We'd want to know who did what, and to be able to investigate, and to have that resource available for our detectives. So, that's, that's why I think it's reasonable to accept the grant that's been offered.
And if I could add, Mayor, one of the neighborhoods to the north of the park actually is a high-crime neighborhood, so depending on the location of the camera, I don't know the range of it, but it may be able to assist.
Okay, but Theo, it's a crime, a high-crime area, but what's the crime statistics? What is, I mean, what is it that make, I mean, because you're going to fix something that's not broke? That's my thing. I mean, that's what I'm asking. You're going to put a camera somewhere where there's no crime?
Well, I feel strongly, I disagree with a lot of what was said relative to, I'll give you an example. Ben's Red Swings. My grandkids play there. If, if, if someone knows there's a camera there, or if, God forbid, we ever had an abduction, and I've been on searches for missing children, if we can save one kid, it's worth a camera. The most vulnerable people in the most undetectable, as the mayor just said, location, because there aren't a lot of public, there are not a lot of private cameras around there, I think that's a prime area where we need it, personally. And I'm all in favor of that. The other ones I could argue with...
It does sound like we agree on the places. It sounds like we agree, I mean, certainly at Ben's Red Swings, certainly at the pumps, the, which public workstation are we talking about?
It's the pump station down by the, by the lake, or the river.
The...
The water.
The water plant.
The water.
The park water plant.
Okay. So, that's...
And the band, and the band on here, it shows the band, bandstand. I'm not sure about that one, but the bandstand, because that's more out in the open. But I'm just saying that if we can get seven free cameras, and pick the, four free cameras, and pick the right areas, and I'm, I think Doverdale Park is a great one, personally.
Yeah, I mean, in good test, there's been some vandalism there in the past, in the past several years. I think some of those were, like I said, we have city assets, such as Ben's Red Swing, the pump chairman, you know, a couple of the playgrounds, I think those, and they have to be pointed, you know, they can't be pointed at a house, they have to be specific.
You're right, I mean, on the...
Because there's a lot, when you put cameras out in the public, that you can't do. Because there's a lot, uh, when you put cameras out in the public that you can't do. So you can't have a, a camera in a neighborhood looking at somebody's house because there's, you know,
Privacy.
That's, that's an issue. But I think a couple spots to that, it doesn't have to be everywhere, but we can target some, some areas.
Honestly, with four cameras, you're, you're not, you're already going to cover so much space with four cameras.
Right.
You're not going to get the whole park anyway.
Oh, yeah.
So if you're looking at Ben's Red Swings, the band stand, even Doverdale, I mean, you've, you've, you've covered your four cameras right there.
Yeah.
And may, you may not be able to cover all, all three of those areas.
As Colonel pointed out, we can submit a grant adjustment potentially, um, or at the very least, I mean, the next funding round for this is in May. So, I mean, we'll be doing this dance again with them. I mean, it's, it's every year, so.
The thing about it is to, you know, some of these cameras, where you want them or ideally where you want them, sometimes that's not possible because they, uh, technology, they have to communicate to, to do a line of sight back to a, a tower or wherever they're getting their, uh.
Yeah.
They have to connect, in other words, so, um, you have to look at those things too. So in some areas down in the park, even, even if you wanted to put seven cameras down right in the park, you may not be able to do that. I mean, you just.
The trees and everything.
Well, uh, the other way that I look at it is somebody's going to get these cameras and I would rather have it be us and then choose where we're going to put them.
I'm, I'll agree. I do agree about having them, but just the places that.
Well, as, as the mayor had said, I think the experts are sitting across the table here and, uh, we can give recommendations for sure. I mean, I have, I can probably pick up eight or 10 in my head.
And to April's point, I think you already pointed out, you know, some of the parameters that we should follow such as
Yeah, privacy.
Not putting it in people's homes.
Yep.
Privacy, you know?
Yep, yep.
Well, that, on the back page, Mr. Council President, it says we're going to move forward and with a total of nine. So we've gone from just special places to on the second page, nine, in 1.2, in a 1.2 mile wide area. So that's, what's
That's for the.
1.2 divided by nine. Well, that's your second one. You'll come back with another.
That's the downtown. That was the.
Right.
So, I mean, if.
I, I just, I don't know. I kind of would.
I think that was including the cameras that were not approved.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That was including the downtown.
The light say that a camera stops. What's going on there?
They, they say that. I'm not sure I agree.
The, if you, you can actually, um, DOJ has an evidence-based practice, uh, website and there, there is mixed, um, uh, reviews in terms of the deterrents. Most of it's positive. It's just whether or not it's within a standard deviation. But there's, I mean, there's universal, uh, universal acceptance that it allows for greater evidence, um, retention and, and everything else. And, and mo- most, most areas that have put in cameras and a lot more than, than I have, they have found deterrents effects. Um, it's, it's just, you know, to what degree? And that also depends on the strategies as I'm sure Chief can, you know, elaborate on.
So I don't know, 1.2 miles divided by nine is point one, three. Now, I don't know if I've actually put that in there correctly with miles or what, you know? Does that mean every point one, three miles, there's a camera?
I believe, I believe the nine was including the, the downtown, which was not, but that was not approved.
I'm just saying the, the nine will be part of a 1.2 mile area surveyed through the cameras.
Those cameras were not approved though.
Right.
So we didn't get the money for the cam, the downtown cameras. So you're looking at four cameras.
But it says SPD will, will also be applying for.
Yes, and, and that was at the same time, and that's the state grant that we did not receive funding for.
Oh, you will go back and try again though, won't you?
I mean, we, we'd probably apply through the federal grant, but that's, like I said, not till May.
I'm curious about what the expenses are beyond the actual acquisition of the cameras and the ongoing expense. Will it actually take additional manpower? Then how long do the cameras last? Then are we obligated to, I mean, I know we aren't obligated to replace them. Will we be inclined to replace them? You know, what are we looking at as we move down the line over time? And does it actually take additional personnel? Or do you already have somebody sitting in front of a great big screen with a lot of?
We've, we've been, we've been communicating with, uh, companies that handle, uh, maintenance on cameras. And it really depends on which way you want to go. It's just like your vehicle. Do you want to purchase a maintenance contract? Depending on how many cameras you have, the nearest an expense, you know, depending on the cameras you have. Um, or do you want to just wait till one breaks and then pay as you go? Um, right now, we're looking at, in the FY18 budget, we're, we're proposing to purchase a maintenance contract. Um, so, but that's going to change depending on the camera you have, what, what exactly you want them to be able to do. A lot of these cameras require going up on a lift of some sort to get to the camera. Uh, I was talking about where you can put them. Um, you got to have to have power. Uh, there's certain, the utility companies that won't allow you to tap into their, their power, um, grid. So, um, there's different things there. To answer, so to answer your question, we're, we're researching that. Um, but there is an expense, there's no doubt, because I mean, it's just like anything else. They're going to break at some point. They're going to need, uh, maintenance to make sure they're functioning right.
But we don't have.
If you get a bad storm, you know, you're going to have there some adjustments that may need to be made, water damage and whatnot.
But we don't have a sense of the expense on this.
Uh, right now, I think, uh, don't quote me on this, but I'm trying to remember what I put in the budget, but I think it was around, uh, $9,000 for, um, the four cameras that we have currently deployed plus the, plus this force, I think it was around 9,000 for a year to, and that was, that was to repair, uh, anything that broke basically, uh, to go up on, on them, do general maintenance on them, uh, so that it would be pretty much turnkey. So we wouldn't be nickel and dimed along the way, unbudgeted, you know, for it to maintenance.
Any other questions? Yes, Chief?
So if I can just add to the conversation, um, kind of give you the, the reasoning behind the choices that we made, uh, with respect to initial placement. We looked at the downtown area and this kind of swath right in the middle of our city in an effort to try to, uh, not only reduce crime, of course, but reduce the fear of crime. Um, there are cases where, uh, cameras do deter, uh, but they also, uh, we see it with our partners with, uh, PRMC and with SU, they do provide an extra sense of, um, reduction in fear. Uh, we, although we work for omnipresence as your police department, we don't always achieve that. So this extends our reach as far as being able to be there for our public and, uh, reducing the fear and getting more people here to enjoy some of the resources that we have is really our goal. Um, we do have access to the cameras. We do have somebody sitting, uh, not necessarily watching the cameras. They are multitasking, um, which is somewhat problematic. We're in looking into other ways where we can leverage technology to where if we set, not today, not with these funds, but, uh, moving forward and getting additional grant funding, if we set certain parameters for these cameras to alert us of when something is happening in the park and draws our attention so we don't detail someone to sit there, um, just watching these cameras for hours and hours. Like I said before, using leveraging technology to assist us with that extended patrol, that force multiplier is really the key component. And that is coming. That's not here today, but that is part of our plan. If you take a look just at the city park, why do we choose both the downtown and the city park? Beyond the reasons I've already given, if you look at our city park, it is essentially in a bowl. And this is problematic. And what you want with public spaces, you want as many eyes and ears on public space as possible to create buy-in. And quite frankly, you can't, if you're set back, as most of our residentials are, is they ring this wonderful resource that we have down, uh, right in the center of our city. They don't have a clear view of the entire area in which they are adjacent to. It's just not there because of the configuration of the landscape and we realize that. So we wanted to make sure that we could start building a system which would cover those blind spots for our consumers, for our public. Um, we really started looking into this about two and a half, three years ago. We had a, uh, an attempted, um, we had an assault. Uh, it, it, uh, we believe in, in working with our victim, um, that it was an attempted assault. She was actually working here with a, a local company and, uh, was out for a lunchtime walk when she was assaulted. We weren't able to, uh, bring that gentleman into custody. Uh, we weren't able to identify that person, unfortunately. Those are the things that we are trying very, very hard to reduce for our public, uh, because they don't want to be subject to this type of behavior and they want to come and enjoy the park. They want to walk during their lunch periods. They want to walk, you know, before the sun goes down. It's used extensively and in order to make sure that we can be as omnipresent as possible, these cameras will assist us in doing that. So, um, speaking to the question of other parks, there are more than 10 parks in our city right now. And our biggest hurdle, uh, is connectivity, quite frankly. We're working with Public Works to resolve those problems, to figure out if there are poles, if there are, uh, it's point-to-point communication for us is, is problematic right now, but we are working on that. That is something that is concerning to us. Our biggest issue right now in Doverdale is just that. It is connectivity. It is point-to-point communication so that we can install a camera there. If, uh, if, if I had my choice, I'd put a camera there today before I left this room. But, uh,
How would you do that?
We don't have the connectivity. So that's going to inquire, require the installation of a pole, a separate pole. If, uh, if you have Doverdale in your mind, the concession stand and the little playground there, uh, behind the concession stand, uh, we would have a pole, uh, that focused the camera towards the remainder of the park. Uh, we'd have at least one there and one on the concession stand building. But the problem is getting that feed back to SPD, quite frankly. That's our biggest, our biggest obstacle right now. Beyond Doverdale, there are numerous parks where our families and our children play. They're in just about every neighborhood around this city, which is wonderful. And we'd like to be able to provide that, that presence. And we'd like to be able to have that nice big sign up there indicating that you're, you're under video surveillance. You know, it's just, this is for our kids. Uh, I've seen them work in other parks, um, that don't have problems around the country and they're wonderful and we need them. Uh, and it's just about connecting our city in that net and making sure that we get, get the right pieces to the puzzle together.
If I heard what you said, the pole is not the issue. The line of sight is the issue.
The pole, the, the one pole, uh, we, we can install a pole, but it's making sure that that connectivity piece is high enough up and then bouncing it to the next location. That's, that's a hurdle that we're working on. Uh, my colleague, um, Mike Moles and I are, are working on that problem along with, uh, Bill Garrett. In fact, that was one of the issues and, uh, maybe you can speak to this about the, the skate park that we really struggled with for quite a while was connectivity, if you recall that problem.
Yes, we were, we were able to tap into a resource at the fire department there.
Fire department.
Which
Fire tower.
Which helped us. But the, the technology now, these, uh, what they call a ubiquity antenna, some folks may know what that is. I had to do a little work on it to figure it out. But basically with that antenna that's on these cameras now, that one, one camera just needs to be able to talk to another camera. Doesn't necessarily have to.
Just go in, right.
As long as that it can communicate with another camera that has connectivity to another camera, to another camera, then ultimately back to your server, then everything's good. That's where things are at now. So it's certainly been very beneficial, we were to do that, but it's a little more expensive.
Any other questions? What's your pleasure? Thumbs up from Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Ierton, Mr. Boda? Thumbs up?
I'm fine.
Thumbs up, alright, we have consensus. I got some ideas about the poles. I'm a chemical engineer, but I know a little bit of.
Well, let's, look, can we just agree that we're going to make sure that we put this together in a way that it doesn't have the same cl- cl- clunking forward like the downtown Wi-Fi does where
Yeah.
Some days it comes upon you and it takes your phone and puts it on Wi-Fi, then other days it, it's like that in the school system too. If the sun's not shining and there's a breeze coming from the west, internet, internet connection is down. But what I don't want to do is end up with nine cameras down there and then somebody come back and say.
We, we have nothing.
You know, it was, it's like the Shell station, it's pointed at the candy store, candy, candy rack, or there was no connection. If you're going to get this and we're going to take their money, the stuff has to talk to one another and we need, we need to be able to guarantee that. That's
I'm going to do you one better.
That's really you. That's really Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to do you one better if I can, I think.
Yeah, there, there's some other options for that as far as, uh, being like on site, having something to store whatever data even if you're transmitting. So there could be a backup put in place. There's that possibility as well.
Well, connectivity is certainly going to have to be addressed at some point.
And, and the physical infrastructure associated with that connectivity is going to be really important to figure out too.
Right.
One of the things that, if you take a really close look at our park and you walk through it and you pay attention to every single element, there are a lot of, there's a lot of legacy infrastructure. Poles, wires, cables, things that have no use anymore and are just left in our park and they're not attractive. And so the solution here has to be not only effective in terms of communication, but it's got to be effective in terms of its, its physical infrastructure. That matters a lot. It's our city park. It, it matters. It's got to be pretty.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's, that's a promise. That's a promise.
Okay, we have consensus on that. So, thank you. Next, next item.
Uh, my protection is good.
Go ahead.
It's okay. These are simple, yes. Um, just, we're re, resubmitting for two grant applications that we applied for last year. Um, one is for enhancements to the drug court, which of course is particularly relevant with everything that's going on. Another one is transitional housing for victims of domestic violence. Um, the, if you look at the comments that were received from DOJ in terms of the drug court, uh, I think we just lost by one vote. Um, it was particularly the summary was a little confusing because one was, this is a very well-written application and then the other guy was like, this is very confusing and not well-written. So I'm not, not 100% sure, uh, what, what went on there. But we are able to apply for up to 400,000. I believe last year was 350,000, which will let us, uh, add two vouchers to our housing program. One of the problems that the drug court has identified is not having the capacity to deal with disabled persons or persons with, uh, co-occurring disorders, which is both mental illness and drug abuse. So by having wraparound services that take into account, uh, both the health department's case management and proper housing and the, uh, life skills case management offered by the drug court will allow for, uh, strong success. Everyone in the drug court, they can't be, um, a violent felon or anything like that. So any exclusions that we have in terms of our housing program of, of ineligible charges wouldn't apply because they have to, uh, you know, they, they can't be in the drug court for, for those charges. Um, most of, most everything in the application, um, generally is the same in terms of, you know, what, what we're going to be trying to achieve, which is offering, um, housing stipends to be in halfway houses. One of the problems that the drug court has experienced is housing insecurity. Um, obviously if a person has been picked up for, you know, let's say for example, you know, theft and that was to fuel a drug habit, they may get their way into the drug court. But if they're stealing to fuel the habit, most likely they already aren't really in a secure housing situation. So if we can work with our partners at Hudson Health, Bayside Housing, um, other areas to put them in, you know, a well-run, uh, overseen, uh, recovery residence, that will ensure that they have greater success, um, in, you know, proceeding through the drug court and then also, you know, ultimately being a quote-unquote productive member of society. Um, are there any questions on that one to begin with?
My questions were just, I was just worried about the overall summary and the, the mixed messages you're getting from the strengths and the weaknesses.
Right.
Who wrote this for us?
The grant or the, the, the grant, Lindsey Taman and I wrote the grant.
Who wrote the grant last time when we got it?
Well, we haven't gotten this award yet. No, this would be our first time. The state got the award three years ago, but because that was for four counties, obviously, you know, the money just wasn't enough. And that was written by the director of the Officer Problem Solving Courts, a guy named Gary Gray Barton, something like that, I don't know his name. Gray Barton, thank you.
Okay, and I just, and it's just maybe semantics, but we project to receive the funding, when will you know?
We'll know October 1, 2017. Yes, the comments were very mixed, which was a little bit confusing, but at the same time, that is a little, that's rather encouraging, knowing that, you know, it seems like it was just one holdout vote that... Oh, and I forgot to mention, one of the other things is it does increase the amount of funding that we'll have available for overtime for officers in terms of drug court, housing...
Home visits.
Home visits, I was gonna say inspections. Which of course, if they are in a, you know, recovery residence, that makes it a lot easier because they have to be drug-tested there and they can't have drugs and everything else. So it really does create a strong wraparound program. We'll also let them go to capacity. They do technically have the capacity for 50, but a combination of, you know, not enough people with eligible charges and staffing and everything else, they haven't always been able to get up to 50.
When will you resubmit?
It's due February 28, I think, end of the month. And the second grant is also an MOU. This one, again, we're reapplying. I've asked...
Let me see if we, let me, first, let me see if we have consensus on the first grant. Yes, okay, we have consensus on the first grant. Sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. The second grant is transitional housing for victims of domestic violence and other forms of abuse. It is a grant that I've, we were denied requesting. I requested info from OVW, I'm still waiting for them to kinda get back to me, I've been haggling them over that. One of the weaknesses, we believe, in our application was that we didn't have a strong employment or vocational training component. That's one of the things that they want to ensure, that, you know, obviously, a woman who's fleeing domestic violence and either is unemployed or underemployed, they may lack some of the skills necessary to re-enter the workforce. So Telamon has a food and service training program that we included in the drug court application, that we will try to include in this application. So that way, you know, we're increasing just the general strength of the program. I think our now having experience within housing and particularly, you know, a permanent supportive housing model, even though Life Crisis Center will be managing the housing, I think it does give our application a bit more strength because it shows to the feds that, you know, the people who will be overseeing this program and doing the monitoring have experience running a housing program. So I'm not as sure, 'cause I, you know, haven't gotten the comments of what our chances of receiving that funding is, but I think it'll be a stronger application. And also, they're actually giving bonus points for working with female veterans, and I have developed a strong relationship with the VA in our housing program, and they'll be submitting a letter of support. So overall, I think our application will be much stronger.
You said vocational training. Wasn't there a program at Warwick?
Yes, there is, there actually is a program specifically for former...
The city funds through popular pre-release. The last two years, the city's funded some training, which also includes domestic violence and some life skills training for the inmates coming out.
Is there enough capacity there that we should include them in the grant?
There is enough capacity, I think they already have enough funding for that program, I'm not sure their funding stream. It would just, we did include that in the narrative, that there is that partnership that Life Crisis Center has with that program. But this would just further strengthen it, and also would, you know, it's, all of the services in the program are voluntary. So, you know, if someone is not interested in food training, obviously, they do not participate in it. It just keeps the housing counseling, the rapid rehousing rental vouchers, case management, trauma support, and vocational training, all within two agencies. So that's, you know, one of the strengths of the application is having that close collaboration. But of course, they do offer that program.
Okay. Other questions? Do we have consensus? Thumbs up from Mr. Boda. Okay. We have consensus.
I tried to be quick, thank you.
Thank you, Theo, thank you, Chief, thank you, Colonel.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Holland, we're gonna talk about permit fee moratoriums.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bill.
A couple of weeks ago, I came to y'all to present this moratorium on permit fees and certain Public Works fees for the construction of new single-family homes and on detached, for the single-family detached homes. When I left, there was a question about how long that the house should remain in homeownership, that's what we're trying to promote, is homeownership, people staying homeowner-occupied homes. And a couple of weeks ago, I proposed a 10-year, that the property or home remains homeowner- for approximately 10, or for 10 years, and the council had some questions about that. So I came back with three options this week. One is to remain 10 years, secondly is that the structure that remain homeowner-occupied for five years, and thirdly, that if it's sold prior to the five years, that 20% of each year, that it's not in homeownership, is paid, the fees are paid back to the city as to be upon transfer of the property.
Questions?
How do we intend to go about enforcing these three options? How, what's the enforcement mechanism?
The enforcement mechanism would be through, when a property is recorded through state assessment, and then when it goes through the city finance office for transfer, that's where, you know, this could be picked up.
And then what happens?
Well, if, well, it depends on which, depends on which option you would go with.
Okay, so let's say we do the 10-year option.
10-year option. If it would be sold out of homeowner, be other than a homeowner-occupied property, then all the fees that was, all the fees in this incentive would be paid back.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if I were the person that purchased the home, what would I experience as a citizen of Salisbury when I don't meet the terms of this document? Am I going to be engaged in a protracted court battle? Am I going to have to come off a lot of money out of pocket? What's going to happen?
What's gonna happen, when the property transfers, that's, if it doesn't remain as a homeowner-occupied property for 10 years, once it transfers, if it's less than the 10 years, then the incentive savings of the approximate $14,250, that's gonna come out during the closing costs.
But the homeowner didn't get the $14,000 break, the developer got the $14,000 break.
And it actually would work like this, if, in the instance... In the instance of a covenant restriction, a deed restriction, they simply wouldn't be able to sell it to someone, to a landlord. Because you wouldn't be able to go through the process, there's, you know, as you go through the closing process, you have to attest to certain things. So one of them would be, you'd have to attest that you couldn't, you'd have to sign the covenant restriction to new owners. So you'd have to say, "I know that I'm, I have to occupy this house." So it wouldn't stop anything from transferring from one person to another, they would just have to live in the house.
But nobody from the city is at that transfer, and that's where I'm gonna tell you right there, nobody's gonna say anything to them.
Well, they...
There is nobody in the world...
The realtors are actually...
No, oh, no, 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 that is absolutely not gonna happen. That is absolutely not gonna happen. Unless there is a law that's written that says they have to do that, they are not going to tell those people.
There is a law.
It has to be recorded in the assessment.
No, I just don't have any faith whatsoever that anybody pays any attention to our directions in these areas.
This happens every day with, right now with covenant restrictions, this happens every...
Yeah, when I bought my house, I was given a list of covenants that came with that, with my purchase, and I was bound by those.
I was given all of that stuff, too, along with several hundred other pages of documents, and I couldn't recount to you anything, that I was just happy the process was over and I could go to my new home. And I mean, my, I guess, I'm not, my concern is, I believe in reducing the number of negative interactions between people and institutions, and that's the city, I don't wanna create a situation where we create a sweetheart deal for a developer, and then it's the consumer that's left holding the bag. And I do want to encourage, and the truth is, I really don't see how we could actually enforce it, because people say anything. You just sign, 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 and do what you please.
What is tied to the deed.
Yeah, but actually, this is something we enforce on multiple fronts on a daily basis right now.
How so? That becomes my question.
Yeah, how so?
So, on a daily basis, right now, we enforce, so on the, on the, once it's owned by a new owner, let's say, once it's purchased by a new owner, there are people who attempt to illegally rent out their houses. And they get caught on a daily basis by our code enforcement officers, it happens constantly. And we prosecute them successfully.
What kind of asks do you have?
Yeah.
Do they get caught by the code enforcer if they're not actually breaking some kinda law?
They are breaking the law.
Okay, no, 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 but I'm not saying that, because how do you know that they're not living there?
And how do we find out?
Yeah, how do you find out they're not living there?
Variety of ways, Susan, do you wanna...
The homeowner's telling you that.
Susan, you might need to come up to the microphone.
Because what you're hoping for is that somebody who lives next door knows that this house shouldn't be rented.
Right.
And I don't know how the person next door is supposed to know that house isn't supposed to be rented, they don't have access to the deed restrictions of the house next door.
And that's my sentiment.
Same way.
It's a case-by-case situation, it's always...
Excuse me, let's wait, 'cause she's answering the question, so...
Well, what we're saying is, is that you can enforce it, but you gotta dig through a trash can that's got 5,000 sheets of paper to find out for sure. And that's exactly what that person who did what they did is counting on the fact that you're not gonna be able to do that. I'm saying that to you because I live in a place where that is exactly what happens.
And why would you go to a house that hasn't, doesn't have a violation as far as something visible that you can actually see?
And even if the violation is just, there's a screen out, that doesn't lead you to the covenants are wrong.
Well, it's actually easy to stumble across a property that is being illegally rented, and I'll tell you how. We stumble across a property with a torn screen, we go rate that up, then we go to ESTAT to see who the property owner is, and it'll say there, even if it says Julia Glanz, and it says that she lives at that residence, it'll say over here, primary residence, no. That keys us on that something is wrong. So we just do a little research, we go, we'll just look to see where Julia Glanz really lives, and she really lives over on the other side of town, or she could live in Baltimore. So then we go knock on the door, and we go rate the property up, and we'll find out that she's got college kids living there. Or she's got another...
So you did, you, that is an excellent way to do it, but you have just proven what we just said at the table, that that is exactly what happens.
But it happens often, and that's how we find out.
And that supports the remarks from this side of the table, that it happens, and it happens often, and there is, they're doing it without thinking that anybody's gonna catch them, and then let's get to that, let's go to that point, you've been caught. Then, how much time do we have, the house is being used illegally, before that house comes back into legal compliance? How many, how long does it take? Because the law's gonna give you, because we talked about this before, Mayor Boda.
It's the same, every property that's covered under 422 is listed, and everybody in this neighborhood, they know what properties are supposed to be 422 or not, and when something goes on, they record it. I don't know how they word it, as says Councilman Arson, I mean, we've had a couple of courts, I mean, they find out, people, people never do come in on their neighborhood.
But we also know that enforcement of 422 was problematic, and...
Just like, I'm sorry, just like Councilman Boda just said, people know what's going on in their neighborhood, we get a lot of complaints from time to time, when it's a slower time of the year, we take, we take pieces of the city and we do surveys, and we check to see how many properties are registered, and we check for homeownership versus not, and make sure everybody's in compliance. We do find chunks of properties who are not, and we take care of them accordingly. To answer your question, within 60 days, we get them into compliance.
I think two...
So what happens if you do get them into compliance? So let's say we build something out, let's say that we had done this out at Stonegate, 'cause we've all walked Stonegate how many times knocking on doors, and we come up on a house at Stonegate that has the owner on the voter list, and somebody who's 18 opens the door, okay? What happens then? And to be honest with you, I'd rather hear somebody from the industry tell me, "I'm confident that I can get somebody to live in this house for whatever, two years, five years, 10 years, whatever we decide." Because if they can't get somebody to live in the house, what happens in Salisbury is exactly what happened in Stonegate. I couldn't sell it, and the covenants weren't strong enough to keep it homeowner-occupied, so it became rental. So my real question is really the market, because enforcement's gonna be what's gonna be. The people who are gonna break the law are gonna break the law, if they do it, we're gonna have to catch them every time, they know which ones are doing it, their industry won't stop them. But the real question is, and circling back around to the money, which is the questions you asked us to get, Mr. Council President, to me, I'm not, I'm not sure, unless something goes wrong, unless there is a violation, unless you have somebody who is the grandmother of the neighborhood who's watching every property, and as long as you keep telling us you find them every day, then that means people are doing it every day.
I gotta say something, this is all about spurring new development, new homes, there is not, there is no surplus of new homes in this city, bringing people into the city to...
And you made that quite perfectly clear with us before, but there's some of us that believe we don't need any new homes, we don't need any more new homes, we're gonna take care of the homes we have.
If I may, if I may...
That's just not true, we desperately need new homes.
I just wanna be clear, I'm a proponent of this. I would like to see it at five years, if for no other reason than the Smart Buy program with the governor is based on five years. I'd like to think he has researchers that came up with the rationale. What I don't wanna see, and I wonder if it's a possibility, that if we could give a no-interest loan that disappears at a graduated rate, so when they go to transfer it, they could just put the loan against the price of the home, and they're never coming out of pocket, there's no threat, there's no stick, just to carry.
Well, that's exactly how the current program through SNHS works, it's, that's, I mean, that's exactly it, it's five years, and so, I think, if I understand correctly, there is a 10-year tax abatement program, and nobody's using it because it's 10 years. So, I mean, that might also be evidence to the other extreme that 10 years is too long, and people aren't willing to use it. So, you know, given the, given what's happened to the market, you know, going to virtually no, no single-family residences left for sale in the city, losing 60% of the inventory in 12 months, and there being additional demand for single-family home buyers and seeing price rising, I think it makes sense to go this route, but I think I see what you're saying, is that if we create an incentive that disincentivizes the very thing we want, it might be wise to adjust fire.
I mean, and I don't wanna make sort of like a paperwork quagmire in creating this program, I just, people's lives change rapidly.
Well, and we don't, we don't wanna create additional enforcement burden on staff.
Yeah, I'm also saying, we don't, and, you know, realistically, we don't know who's in each home, and I don't even know if it's worth chasing them down, because typically, it's some disgruntled neighbor who decides, "I don't like these people," and most other people are fine with them, and now we're forcing people out of a home, and that's always unpleasant. And then people leave, and they say, "I was in Salisbury, I couldn't even stay in my home." That's unpleasantness, it's almost unnecessary to me, but I would like to see something where, I just wanna make sure that there's sort of not this apparent burden, and there's a seeming incentive for people, because I wanna see these complexes, I've looked at all these complexes, I like to see them up and moving. So I'm all for it, I'm just saying I don't want the consumer having to deal with it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So we have, and I'm only comparing this just because this is something that we chase down constantly almost every day with landlords, the tenant's rates at lease denum, it's something that we're fining people all the time for it, because we're finding that landlords, some landlords are not providing it. So we're constantly chasing them down, and we're fining them $500 for not having it. You know, I don't know how many people we're gonna be talking about that's gonna be receiving this, and I don't think it's, if we did any enforcement, if Housing Community Development did the enforcement, I don't think it's one that we would have to be enforcing every month, or, you know, every couple of months, but if they did it, if maybe we did a check maybe every three years, or, you know, every, maybe at a five-year mark, that it could be tracked somewhere, just to say, "Are these people still in the house?"
If the government showed up to my home to say, "Are you still in this house?", I would say, "The hell are you doing here?"
But at the same time, they're receiving, but they're receiving...
But if you're breaking the law, and you say, what are you doing here?
I'm not breaking the law, I'm breaking the contract between...
Right, but they're receiving a break, a break.
And, and then if I'm in the home, I'm not breaking anything.
Correct, but if they're not breaking anything, that they should be welcoming...
I would still be offended, like, really, the government decided to show up, didn't you get the payment? I'm making the payment, leave me alone, it's my home.
But it's something that they're...
But it's after you sell it. If you don't stay that long, and you sell it, what happens to the people who... See, we're not worried about you being there, we're worried about what you do it afterwards, is what we're worried about.
Well, afterwards, ideally, people will occupy the home.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Who has control of a, if he, after, you're saying after the five years?
I don't even think that's a concern at this time.
Yeah, no, I think you're right. And after the five years...
After the five years, you...
And, and if it, and if, just like the SNHS loans, the zero percent, you know, if it goes, it's prorated, you know, at a five, twenty percent...
And that's, that's why I think we'll resolve the issue.
I mean, do you see where I'm going with that? And it creates the incentive, there is sort of no, we remove that punitive component. So if you leave the home, then you lose the benefit, and you have to put it on top of the price of the home for the next person that occupies. And we hope that person doesn't rent it. So, I mean, theoretically, they aren't going to rent it. I don't know how you control who's in a home and who's not. That's a very difficult business, but...
Mr. Boda, you had a, you had a, I saw your eyebrow go up.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the point, I think the point that, you know, you're, you're a construction company, and you're building these things to sell, you know, this is going to be a seller, hey, we're able to save you so much money on, on a brand-new home, and, and this is how the process works. I think, you know, as long as it's explained well, and they're being required, and that they, they do something similar to what landlords, on their stuff, with the tenant's bill of rights, and stuff that they're required provides tenants, I think that's something that, that should be done. And the other point, I, I think this all works a lot like they, they had that program about seven or eight years ago, new home buyers, with the federal government, where they got a significant tax break, but it was a loan, and you just paid it back over the years when you filed the tax. So, it, it, it's in that, in that line.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think we're all in agreement, that's where we're heading. So I'd like someone to be able to summarize that.
Well, I, I want to jump on there with Mr. Boda, because I, I had asked to have some time to speak with people throughout my district. I spoke to twelve people, nine of which who couldn't support it, three of which who said if, three of which who said, I, I don't think that the incentive goes to the right person, and ten of those twelve people saying, how come existing homeowners don't get the break for staying in some of the neighborhoods that we have? Now, I, I did try my best to say, we're talking about construction in places that are, but the people who live in our neighborhoods are not worried about that, the construction out there, because what they see is a house that goes bad in the neighborhood, and we're creating new houses for people to move to out there, which creates a flight situation. What was suggested to me, and I, I know we, the original legislation said a year, correct? It was a, a year. Now, I didn't, the Gladden Company was here last time, so I, something came up on the newspaper online about Gladden starting construction back down on Beagle Park Drive. Now, his end number in that area was, was fifty-four units, so...
Single family.
Single-family units. So, I, I just, you know, I sat there with my calculator when I was sick all weekend, and, you know, if you did fifty-four units, let's say he did, and I know you can't say that, because you would be getting them from a whole lot of different places, but if Gladden did all fifty-four of his, conscribe construction at fourteen thousand dollars, that's seven-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars. Now, what the people that live in my neighborhood said, well, instead of giving the incentive to the developer to build the new home, why would we not give more incentives to people to buy existing homes that are in Salisbury, that are for sale in our neighborhoods that need to be revitalized?
That's a super easy question to answer.
Well, hold on, let me tell you what the citizens said first.
We've talked to the citizens, too.
Well, but citizens weren't here, construction companies were here, and lobbyists are here, and other, other people in the industry are here. So, I'm squarely tell you where I come from, and it's, it's citizens. So if you were to do, take that seven-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars and do a one-time, one-year reduction in somebody's taxes for somebody who buys a new home, you could incentivize seven-hundred-and-fifty-six new mortgages in our existing neighborhoods. If you did it for five years like SNHS does, you could do one time, if it, around, whatever the average number is, I took my taxes, my city taxes, which I know are higher somewhere or lower other places. If you did one time for five years, it's a hundred-and-fifty-one new homeowners that are living in neighborhoods that need to be revitalized before we build out at the outset. But, trying to be open-minded with the people from the industry that did come before us, it was suggested to me because my neighbors are, are very fair, and they was like, well, why don't we split the difference? If it's fifty-four units at seven-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars, why not drop the incentive to seven-thousand dollars instead of the whole fourteen? And take three-seventy-eight and use it to incentivize the building out there in those developments that we have, and then use the other three-seventy-eight...
When we say out there, could you be more specific to where we're referring?
Away from, because this development is in neighborhoods that aren't in need of revitalization.
No, it's not. This is in your neighborhood. This is in your neighborhood.
Did I finish? These places are on the outer edges of the city.
No, it's not.
They are not even high...
We're, we're just as significant as every other area.
Yeah.
No, because there are places in the city that are in the inner core that need to be revitalized.
This is my neighborhood, too.
But we continue to be, but we also would include the vacant lots that we talked about before, that could have people build on them, because it was suggested to us that because of the fees, one single vacant lot here or there, it's not cost-effective to go ahead and build a house there. So, the suggestion was made, instead of incentivizing the person to build the house, let's incentivize the person who's going to buy the house. So it was just suggested to me that we take a fixed amount, give half of it to incentivize in those areas where we're trying to kickstart, where Bill's trying to kickstart, where we have places that started during the boom and then didn't keep going on. But we also, was suggested to me that we give a nod to those places in the, in the inner core that need to be revitalized, hence the, the property that, that the council took on Delaware Avenue.
But we're talking about...
I mean, it is, it, there has to be, in my opinion, and Mr. Lennox will say to me, and you will say to me, we drew that circle, and those people are in the core. That is correct. But when things stop building out that way, in my opinion, the core gets smaller, and the, the inside of the core gets, I just, I'll just say this to you, ten of those twelve said, how come existing homeowners don't get the break? And I smiled at them and said, well, that's not going to happen, because everybody was like, how come my taxes can't go down? But it was suggested to me that there is a way to find, to split the difference, instead of giving all of the incentive to just one particular segment of the housing industry, which is the developer, and switching a little bit and giving it to people who would be buying houses in existing neighborhoods.
I will go, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're on two different sides of the balance sheet. So, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars number is a, is a number, if all of those properties were developed, right? And new houses, those are houses that, right now, what we're all hearing is, nobody's going to build otherwise. So you're talking about revenue that you're foregoing. Whereas, if we're talking about tax dollars that we know we're going to get, that's real dollars, revenue that we expect every single year. So who are you going to lay off, and what services are you going to stop providing when you make those cuts to revenue? Versus...
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Well, if, if we're going to give a fourteen-thousand-dollar cut to anybody, it's going to come out of revenue.
No, no, it's, it's going to kind of, come out of revenue we wouldn't otherwise see, revenue we aren't planning on, revenue we don't expect, revenue that's future tax dollars that we don't anticipate, because no one is building single-family housing in Salisbury.
But isn't that because of...
Yet, the market is demanding it.
No, the other...
And the jobs are coming here to our city, the jobs are coming to our city in our region, and the, the places where people are building housing are in Worcester County and Sussex County. And what the, what the industry, you're right, is saying is, we would build in Wycomica County and in Salisbury, even in Salisbury, if the fees were lower, only because, not because your fees are extraordinarily high, not because your fees are unreasonable, but because your fees are, just happen to be around the margin that we would get on the same house if we built it in Worcester County or Sussex County.
And let me, let me also say, from, from facts, the, while the inventory in the city and the county has decreased in the last year, the average sell price has not changed.
It's up five.
So if you're going to, so if you're going to, if you're going to build, as a businessman, I'm not going to, I can't afford to build, because you're screwing around with my margin. I've lost my margin in the, in the one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars that used to be worth one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand dollars or one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. So, what we're saying is, in order to incent the development of those houses and make them affordable, because the, the, the person who's buying the house, if the trend stays the way it is, are not going to be paying anymore for that house. It's not going, it's not going to happen, until the economy really starts taking off. But the economy has gotten better, yet the housing prices stayed the same, and the inventory's gone down.
Demand is increasing, supply is not increasing.
It's, it's fundamental capitalism.
Could I, could I just add one numbers point real quick? The, if each house increases the value of the property by one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, you would recoup the money in property taxes over ten years. So you, over the course of ten years, you would have a net positive, just from the city's standpoint. That's all.
I mean, there, there are things we can do to change this, so that, to your point, Jim, that it narrows geographically to a more, you know, focused set of areas. One of the things that came forth in discussions over the last few weeks from Jack's office is that we should probably just strike all of, you know, the thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty lines, where it, you know, breaks down all of those, and just say, and just stop at single-family detached dwelling units. If that's what, you know, if the market is asking for single-family detached dwelling units, just delete that, because there's actually several other zones where you could build single-family housing, uh, single-family dwelling units that are left out. You know, there, there are a number of, of things you could do. You know, we originally played around with the idea of saying it had to be developed, lots had to be developed on three sides in order for it to qualify as infill, and that just got really squirrely. It got really hard to figure that out. You know, we've just, we've got a situation where people are moving to the area, because employment is increasing, and they're moving to our neighboring counties. They're not moving here. And they are, you know, happy to reap the benefits.
But if you, and really, what we ought to do is have a, have a work session on the margins. You know what I mean, the margins? And why, you can make the margin over there, or over there, or over there somewhere else.
Because it's by the beach.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's a damn ocean, I understand.
It's getting closer every day.
But I would say to you, what, what people in my neighborhood would say, is that your margins are what they are because of what's sitting in the neighborhood. But, you know, if you wanted to give half of this to SNHS and say, go find one-hundred-and-fifty-one new, new homeowners, and we'll pay their taxes for five years, I think, I, I just...
But here's the problem.
And I would have to figure out a way to say this without Jack giving me the look that he gives Julia sometimes. I admire and I appreciate the council president's view and his longstanding experience in business, but I will say that I, from my, where I am, that is not where my perspective comes from. And I would love to take, now I want to take Jack back to those twelve people, and I want to put him in front of those twelve people while we were drinking. You know, over, you know, over the hot, over, over the last couple of weeks, and say, now I want you to listen to what Mr. Heath has to say, because there is, there is something to be said here about why people are not building it here and over there, and, and see if the numbers came out a little bit different. But if faced with a decision tonight, I couldn't support, I could support it, switching it around a little bit and maybe offering incentives, but my feeling is that the people where I live would like a little bit more respect for the fact that they stayed, and they've stayed this long. And you and I have to sit there and go have beer and talk about how I don't hate renters.
We could do it after this.
All right, let's, let's, yeah, let's, Mr. Mayor, you go, Mr. Boda, if you have anything, we'll go.
Three other quick things. One, and of, I think I've already forgotten one of them. At least two other things. One, we, there isn't anything to give half of it away to somebody else, because we're talking about money that wouldn't exist otherwise. So these are, you know, these are future dollars that we won't get if, if we don't create an incentive for it to come. So you can't give half of it to SNHS. Now, I, I like the idea of having a conversation about assisting in homeownership through other ways to assist the, the demand side, so helping people get into housing. This is one of those demand-side tools, but I'd say there's, you know, ultimately, this will help to create additional supply. The, the second thing that I think is worth mentioning is that, you know, I, I completely agree about our neighborhoods. You know, I, I have lived all of my life in Salisbury, in an older Salisbury neighborhood. And so I'd say that the next conversation we're going to have is about the plan for revitalizing our three most distressed neighborhoods in the city. And that's something that, you know, council has asked for, and that we're going to talk about, and we're talking about catalysts in three neighborhoods. And so, we've got a recommendation, obviously, from one of the committees regarding that, but, but I think this is about a different problem. This is about a very different problem, which is that people are moving to the area, and they can't find the type of housing, this type of housing, single-family, in Salisbury, so they're choosing to go elsewhere. That's, that's all I got.
Okay, I think it's time, just sort of, to see where we are. So, it's, it sounds like, and I'll, I'll try to sort of see if I can summarize where I think we want to go, based on what I heard. It sounds like five years with some kind of loan, or whatever you, not loan, whatever, similar to the...
Forgiveable.
Forgivable, right, right? That's what I heard that sounded like we were getting some kind of consensus. Not ten, ten's off the table, but five years with some, some form of forgivable loan. Can we tighten that up and come back with a proposal? Or, I, I think, rather than just try to make it up here, I don't feel comfortable with that. But I think if that's what the consensus is to head in that direction, then I think we should do that and, and handle it at the next work session.
Well, I think the language exists in the memo.
The five with the, with the, about the loan two?
The third item.
Yeah, number three, it's, you know, the five years. Property owner sells it to another, homeowner wants to live there, there's, it just keeps right on going, like...
Pays twenty percent.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But then... If, if an investor would come in and buy it, then, then there, there is a repayment there, settlement.
All right, and, and...
From the legal point, you...
Then my question becomes, how does that feel to the, how is the consumer going to experience that repayment? Is he, is it up to him to just pass it off to that possible person who would rent the property? Or is he going to get a bill of some sort? I just want to...
It'd be...
Mark, could you help?
Where it's a lien like this, the seller, who's selling the property, would have to pay it out of his proceeds at the time of the sale.
So it would be tagged onto the price of the home?
On the price of the home, like we, like we were talking about.
Well, not, it could be tagged on.
Or they could decide to pay it.
If it, yeah, the seller could just pay it himself, if he knows, you know, he got that benefit, and now he's reaping some profit by selling it to an investor. And the other thing you can do is, you know, if it's sold during the five years, we can do what we do, you know, just have the new purchaser sign that this is my residence, where I will live there, and in which case it wouldn't become due at that point.
And this won't make you any more money. I want to make sure it's not making, no, I can't.
The lawyers are going to get paid, but anybody here at the table does.
It's going to be a lien, it's going to be a lien.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
And so therefore, a transfer is going to be collected.
I will say that, that though I am a proponent of the revitalization of the core of Salisbury, I don't believe that that should come at the expense of the revitalization of people that live out on the external of the city. I just wanted to make that point, and I want to be clear about it. You know, just because I live over in a newer community doesn't mean I'm as much of a citizen mean I'm as much of a citizen of this city, and it does not mean that the vitality of my community should be compromised. And if the market speaks, and this is where people go, and this is where services are going to be, so be it. We can only do so much to, to, to manipulate the market. I just wanted to say that, because he, you know.
I just thought it turned on CNBC.
Okay. So, and we can develop the language, if you would send that language out. Is it, is it exactly, so you want to take?
I think that exactly reflects, because this was, that was the intent for the third option.
But in.
I, I would suggest that there are two changes. That plus Mr. Lennox's edit.
Right.
To 38, 39, and 40.
If, when you, when it's rewritten, if you could get that to us, but I want, I think we have consensus now. Let's see if we do. And I'll, I'll do this semi-formally. Mr. Boda, do you have consensus to move it? His thumb is up, I hope. Mr. Irtin?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Rudisil?
For option three, yes.
Option three.
Say, me, option three.
All right, we have consensus. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Thea. Okay. Susan, you're back up. Come up and join us. Mr. Thomas, good to see you.
The seat's warm here.
The seat's warm, yes.
Good evening, Garrett.
Good evening.
All right, tonight we're going to discuss purchase of 306 Newton Street. This structure is currently owned by US Bank, and the structure is a 3,780 square foot home that was built in 1920. It's on a lot that is 8,689 square feet. Code enforcement-wise, we've been dealing with this property since about 2010. My records went back as 2012, as far as 2012, we've got 39 cases. That's just code enforcement. I wasn't able to get the PD records this quick. It's a property that we've constantly been having to deal with, boardups, vagrants going in. Structurally, the, the house is in good, very good condition. It's a beautiful home, brick home. It's on the corner of Newton and Light, right across to the tot lot, and then right next door to the community garden, Camden Community Garden, and then, which is also across the street from St. Francis to Sales. So the location of the structure is optimal for a community center. So we have negotiated a deal with the Realtor in the bank to purchase this home for $35,000. The state assessment of the structure right now is $85,000, so way below the value of the structure. I've gone through the, gone through the structure with Bill Holland, the building official, with an architect, with the mayor, with Julia, and this, the structure is very sound, very strong. Honestly, it just has some aesthetic issues, just needs to be cleaned up, and to make, turn into a community center, some, would need to have some renovations done. But the location is optimal. It's in a neighborhood I feel that it would be perfect for because of the, the neighborhood, the community, the mixed culture. It's got young children in it, in the close proximity, again, to the tot lot, and the community garden, and St. Francis.
Could you tell us, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm wondering if, there, this is part of the recommendations of the White Axe. I'm wondering if Jim can.
It is, sure. Now, Susan defined it very well, and Youth Development Advisory Committee, which I'm vice chairman, Robbie Sheehan, who's chair, could not be here tonight, so I'm filling in for him. But we have, we have looked at this a great deal, and realizing that, you know, one of our charges is to consider your best, best investment of the money that you put in your budget for community centers. This property came along, and two areas that we had been targeting were the North Camden area and the Church Street area. And this seems to fulfill, or could fulfill, our needs for the North Camden area. We're especially happy at looking at the possibility of doing an after-school program there. As, but our physical and creative development subcommittee has also recently raised with us a lot of possibilities in terms of a, a marketplace of services, if you will, for the new community centers that we are considering. And it's kind of opened our eyes that maybe not looking at it just for a single use. Also, when Robbie Sheehan and I visited community centers in Baltimore, we ran into one at, which was called 29th Street Community Center. It had been supported by Johns Hopkins University and their local homeowners association. It, it got started that way. I, actually, it was a community schools concept, but what appealed to us was the number of activities it was being used for. It was being used by young mothers for exercise classes. It was being used for out-of-school activities. It was being used at night for workplace development activities. Had a yoga class going on, had an attached gym to the, to the school that was only open once the school was closed. They had to key both ways. But we can't do that here. But at the same time, we think that this 3,700 and some odd square feet could be renovated well within your budget, and it could be an excellent place for some of these multiple services that we envision, as well as an out-of-school program. We also have Cheryl Metz, as you know, is, is Secretary of Youth Development Advisory Committee. She's the Director of Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. She was aware of the house when we vetted it, talked about, vetted is maybe the wrong word, but we did try to do her due diligence related to it. She was aware of the house, and it helped us a great deal, I think, in putting a prospective number together, what it might cost you to be up and running. So I, I, we, we did come through with a recommendation to the mayor to go ahead and purchase it at the price Susan mentioned, and we think it could hold great possibilities. The other thing that Susan brought up, and and we have been talking about it, I know the mayor's talked about it, is this connectional situation between the tot lot, the community gardens, and St. Francis. We think that could really be dynamic in the long run, that you could get all those facilities working almost in a, in a, in a mall concept, concept. Unless, if you look at it on the map, it's, it's really that kind of an extension. So we're excited about that. And we did pass a recommendation on to the mayor, and it was voted on by the entire board, which has grown considerably, as you know, Mr. Heath, having been there for most of the meetings. So we have a good cross-section in the community, and we feel that we have the support to go forward with this. I, I will say just quickly, we are looking at other possibilities, particularly the Church Street area. We're trying to do our due diligence right now on a couple of properties, to see what could be imagined with those properties, and try to develop some kind of preliminary cost of what it, what it might be to upgrade them. So we're, we're really enthusiastic about going forward there.
Great.
And can I share that the, the committee voted not only on that recommendation, but on the general recommendation regarding Church Street, that we should focus on a series of properties that had been preliminarily vetted by the committee, which is maybe four or five.
That's right.
And so that process is ongoing right now. And some of them are similar in that they're not, none of them are former residential properties, but some of them are similar in that there's close proximity to playground, pre-existing playgrounds, things like that, which just makes it easier in terms of the cost and the site development, and then just proximity. You've already got a, a relationship, you know, kids who live within walking distance already have a, a, an understanding, a geographic understanding of, okay, I know how to walk over there. I know where the, you know, where the playground is. And then, just to give everyone a sense of next steps for both of those facilities, we would engage the committee in a public conversation, brainstorming, if you will, about program specs, bring an architect in to kind of facilitate those conversations. That would also come, ultimately, all the architectural and construction services would come from the same budget that we established in FY17. And then, ultimately, I think we'd also want to do a forum in the neighborhood involving young people, parents in the neighborhood, to try, try and get an understanding of things that we might not be thinking of inside a committee room.
I think there's more work to do on that, as the mayor has said, and it makes a lot of sense. We're trying to get an apples-to-apples comparison of the several properties we're looking at. Not all of them can offer, they're space constrained, they're, they may require, one may require more than the other to be upgraded. So we want to get a fair comparison when we're looking at these multiple properties, to see what we have. But we expect to get there shortly, especially with the help of the city and the architectural assistance.
Questions?
How, how, how are we gonna get community buy-in? So, you know, and, and then, you know, my brain is also going to, what is this actually going to look like? And how is this actually going to be executed? And how are you going to get the community engaged? You know, I'm looking at the Baltimore Community Center you mentioned. There's 44 staffers there. You know, they have yoga going on there, but there's a yoga studio right around, well, around. Sure. A few corners. And I don't think people in this community use that yoga studio. Well, I know they don't. Yeah, I, I wasn't trying to pinpoint that. I was just trying to offer an example of that, that community was offering services that the community felt like it needed. And they even, they've even rented it out for birthdays, for anniversaries, for whatever. And we were very impressed with that. And, and we think something like that could happen at, at Newton Street as well, Newton Light Street.
Yeah, so one of the things that's happened already at Newton Street is, so this past summer, we had the lunch in the garden. So there's a, there's a, there are three neighborhoods that have a, a very high population of juveniles, you know, of under 18. And this is one of the three in the city. There's the West Side, North Camden, Smith Street area, and then Church Street. And on North Camden, Church Street, the lunch in the garden brought a lot of kids, you know, on a daily basis to have lunch in the garden, learn about, you know, healthy foods, learn about, you know, how to take care of a garden, things like that. And so one of the conversations that the leaders of that effort had and began was, you know, what are some of the opportunities you'd like to see in a recreation center or a community center? And I think we learned a lot from that conversation, but, you know, any sort of good charrette process and community engagement process requires iteration. So I think we'll have to have a number of meetings. I think the community garden offers a great way in that there's food associated with it. The playground, the tot lot offers another way, in that kids come to play, and you can engage them in that sense. You know, if you tried to have a public hearing in some faraway room like this about it, you wouldn't get engagement from the people who are gonna use it. But if you, if you did it there, if you did it in that space, where people are in, you know, the community garden or the tot lot, I think we could get a lot of positive feedback. And that's gotta be a part of the process. So the, the community input that we've gotten already, as well as the, the engagement of the dozens of people involved in the development, Youth Development Advisory Committee, have provided essentially the following guidance, which is, it shouldn't just be one thing. Multiple entities, nonprofits that don't have a physical presence that are working with kids should be able to use it, and should be able to enter into an arrangement to use pieces of it. One example that comes up pretty frequently is the Phoenix Youth Project. Amber's, Amber Green's Phoenix Youth Project doesn't have a physical presence, so it ends up using a lot of different spaces. But this could be a place where they could have an agreement where, you know, for, I, I would, I would think we would manage it in such a way that, for no cost, they were able to use it for some period of, of time, you know, for certain hours. The highest need that's been identified is, because a lot of state and federal funding has come in for 16 to 24-year-olds. So the highest need identified where there's no funding, or very little funding, is in sort of early intervention, intensive, after-school programming, and summer, but after-school in particular, so, and in the neighborhoods that don't have schools. So in the neighborhoods where there's not an immediate walkable school, after-school for the younger, sort of under-16 age is the highest need. So that's been the focus. But that would be a core program, but wouldn't be the only thing allowed. So if you could get other things going in there, that'd be ideal. Recreation has also been a question, and so we've engaged St. Francis in terms of having some indoor opportunities for recreation, so a partnership there, and essentially saying, in winter months, when they can't run around on the playground, give them somewhere to be that's warm, if you need play space. And the spaces that we're looking at in Church Street all have that involved. So you'd already have sort of, you'd be able to build out indoor basketball courts. You'd be able to build out indoor recreation and play space for the winter months. So in other words, a variety of things are already known that, that are needed, but the process of determining the exact, precise programming is one that will only begin once we know the, the spaces.
You know, if I could just interject two other things, or second with the mayor saying, I think that we did hear an awful lot about early childhood intervention, and this is nothing new to Councilman Irtin, but when we went to see the Annie Casey Foundation last week, we got an awful lot said about that, and the need to be there, that, that can make a real difference. So that's stuck in our minds, and is one thing that we want to go forward with. They shared a, a lot of information with us. I think they're gonna want to know feedback from us. They were impressed with what Salisbury had done in, in essence, seven months with our Youth Development Advisory Committee, and where we could go in the future. So we're looking forward to that kind of a, a close relationship. The second thing that mayor mentioned was, was food, and the Emotional Mental Wellness Subcommittee really wants to kind of take that on the road, so to speak, and is working on a program called Unite Salisbury that is centered around food, where they would go from, from community to community within Salisbury, and, and also bring along this basket of services that could be open to, to the neighborhood. It would primarily be to enjoy yourself and come there and have some food, but oh, by the way, take a look at what you could avail yourselves of. So we're excited about that possibility as well.
Does the purchase price come out of the bonded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, as of right now, that is our only source of funding, though I will say, with all of the major foundations in the room, we're hoping to increase our, you know, we're hoping to work with them to create community fundraising, because $500,000 on two buildings is only gonna go so far.
In, in terms of this marketplace of services that we very generally talked about, that, that as I said, has been active in their physical and creative development subcommittee. And we do have a couple of members of some other foundations on that particular subcommittee. And they voiced the same thing that mayor's talking about, about really kind of getting engaged in a concept where you could bring that marketplace of services to a neighborhood. So we're hopeful that that could lead to a, to a partnership with some of the foundations.
If you get the opportunity, go to one of those meetings. It's, it's amazing to watch. I mean, the way that they're organized and structured is.
It's really working. I mean, I mean, it felt like we had a tiger by the tail at first when we started increasing membership from 27, 29 to 86 or 87 now. And, but by dividing up into the subcommittees that we have, we really get some good working meetings. The one that I mentioned, the Physical and Creative Development Subcommittee, their, their December meeting went for two hours and a half. And they, they really developed, this is where they really fine-tuned a little bit their concept of this marketplace of services. So we're really looking forward to, going forward with something like that.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Okay, we have consensus to move forward. Oh, two thumbs up.
He probably wants to enjoy Peru.
Peru, yeah, he wants to get out and, okay, we have consensus. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Thea. Okay. Anything else for the goodie order? Hearing none? We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
See ya. Have, have a good trip. Think of us. It was 86 here, by the way.
Have you heard of this neighborhood choice?